Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, May 3rd, 2016, at 6:30 PM with the Palm Coast Community Wing for a regularly scheduled meeting of the Palm Coast City Council. Would you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mayor Nets.
Here.
Vice Mayor Shipley.
Here.
Councilmember G. Lorenzo.
Here.
Councilmember McGuire.
Here.
Councilmember Nobiel.
Here.
Mayor, all members are present.
Thank you very much. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the April 19th City Council Meeting, the April 26th City Council Workshop. Are there any additions, corrections, or is there a motion to approve?
Moved to approve.
Seconded.
Moved in second. If all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries without objection. Agenda item number two, proclamation recognizing May 1st through 7th as Public Service Recognition Week. Who's got that?
That's me.
Okay, sir. Thank you.
We're going to have a few employees joining us, and so I want to introduce them, and then Mr. Nobiel will read the proclamation. So each year we recognize various employees for their time of service, and so tonight we've invited employees who have been working for the city of Palm Coast or its previous agencies for 20 years or more. So we have, representing tonight, we have Steve Flanagan from Community Development and Judy Flammer, also from Community Development. We have Chief Vito from Fire, and we have Jim Hogan from Utility, and anyone else? All right, so...
Whereas Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels, these unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation working. And whereas public employees take not only jobs but oaths, and whereas many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, border patrol officers, embassy employees, healthcare professionals, and others, risk their lives each day in service to the people of the United States and around the world. And whereas public servants include teachers, doctors, nurses, train conductors, astronauts, safety inspectors, laborers, computer technicians, social workers, and countless other occupations. Day in and day out, they provide with dignity and integrity the diverse services of their government demanded by the American people. And whereas, without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city of Palm Coast does hereby recognize May 1st through May 7th, 2016 as Public Service Recognition Week. All citizens are encouraged to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and city. Sign this third day of May, City of Palm Coast, Florida, Mayor John Nets.
Thank you. Again, one more second. Are we going to do pictures? Because I can't, I need a picture. Yes, you may.
You've got a speech, though. It's good enough. I'm a mayor, city members of the...
City Council. Thank you very much, Mr. Nobiel, for the kind words. I have to admit, when I was first asked to come and accept the proclamation this evening, I wasn't sure whether it was an honor or an insult as the old guy.
How many?
We're not counting. All kidding aside, with any organization, it's the people within it that make or break that organization, determine its success or failure. And here in Palm Coast, from our landscape architect and accountants to our ZLD, operators and technicians, and all of the employees in between, they just do a super job. As Mr. Nobiel said, you know, they're working behind the scenes, unsung heroes, and we are so fortunate to have a talented, diverse group of professionals that truly are the cog that makes this city great and makes it a great place to live and work. And representing all of the employees tonight, I am proud and honored to accept this proclamation in their behalf. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Chief, you have nothing to say?
No.
Follow me.
No, really.
You have to change this procedure. Lie down in there.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm way down here. Congratulations.
You should be in the middle of the proclamation. Oh, yeah, yeah. You hold it. Go ahead. You hold that. No, no, go ahead. This is yours. That's not mine. I'm just a...
Over to that side of the man. That would be...
I guess.
All right, we're good this time. Perfect. All right, I'm going to do a couple, and it counts. One, two, three.
Beautiful. Congratulations. Chief, good job. You're the youngest. Agenda item number three, proclamation designating May 7th, 2016 as Arbor Day.
Arbor Day. I saw the Arbor lights. Okay.
Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Palm Coast does hereby proclaim Saturday, May 7th, 2016 as Arbor Day. Be it further proclaimed that the City Council urges all of its citizens to support the efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and to plant trees which will promote the well-being of this and future generations. Dated this third day of May, 2016, City of Palm Coast, John Nets, Mayor.
Carol, thank you very much. For everything you do for the city, you have something to say?
Of course I do. When don't I? Well, I'm thrilled to be here. This is actually the 11th year that we're celebrating Arbor Day. So I'm thrilled. It's really a great accomplishment, and it's great to have the mayor and the council that really supports Arbor Day and being green, and for the city to keep achieving that Tree City USA Award. And actually, this year, we achieved another milestone, which we received the Sterling Tree City USA. So I'm honored this evening to present the National Arbor Days Foundation prestigious award, the Sterling Tree City USA, to Mayor Nets, City Council, and the residents of Palm Coast. The city achieved the award by completing activities totaling 10 points or more in the following categories: education and public relations, partnerships, planning and management, tree planting and maintenance, for 10 consecutive years. So that's a real milestone. So this is a tremendous achievement, and no, I intend it. Oh, see, you guys are awake. I was just checking. Excellent. So congratulations, Mayor, City Council, and residents, for all your support for Arbor Day, and for us being a Tree City, and also for your commitment to the city being green.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We go again.
You have to switch, because you really deserve this.
Whatever.
Okay. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
This will hang a place of honor in our offices.
Thank you.
Sit down. She doesn't want to put it. On the wall in the office.
Thank you, sir.
Make sure you're not barking up the wrong tree there.
It's getting worse and worse and worse. This is a fantastic event.
Remember that.
Don't forget about Saturday. Okay, yeah. She just mentioned Saturday.
Thank you.
Agenda item number four, proclamation recognizing May 3rd as Teens in Flight Day. This is a very special one.
We are as retired Marine Corps Colonel Jack Howell of Palm Coast founded Teens in Flight, a nonprofit foundation that provides flight training to teenagers who have lost a parent in military service or whose parents were severely injured in action. And whereas the Teens in Flight program helps teens struggling with loss and grief by providing free flight lessons that create a positive and fun experience that helps those, that helps these young people work through their grief with the goal of earning their private pilot license. And whereas Teens in Flight is headquartered at the Flagler County Airport but operates across the United States. And whereas Teens in Flight has assisted more than 100 young people since its inception 10 years ago, with both Colonel Howell and his wife Samantha being personally involved in the flight lessons and administration of the program. And whereas Teens in Flight is a perfect example of a continued commitment to putting others first, especially others who are experiencing terrible tragedy at a young age. And whereas Colonel Howell, recipient of the Purple Heart, was recognized by the Congressional Medal of Honor Foundation, Washington, DC, as 2016 national finalist in the Citizens' Honor Program for his work with Teens in Flight for the past 10 years. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, that May 3rd, 2016, be officially designated as Teens in Flight Day in the City of Palm Coast, and that all Palm Coasters be encouraged to celebrate this worthy national program and its dedicated volunteers. Signed this third day of May, 2016, City of Palm Coast, John Nets, Mayor.
I could not have done the program without the support of the county and the city staffs here, the councils and the commissioners. You've been a great asset, as well as the school board, and, you know, I'm very proud of the kids. I want to say that 100% of the children are teenagers who complete my program, go to college. And some of the colleges are West Point, Naval Academy, University of Florida, I haven't got any to LSU yet, but I'm working on it, Texas Christian Stetson, they all go to great schools. And this is another part of our program. As an expert in traumatic injury, I am concerned that unfortunately some children, because of what's happened and the trauma that they're experiencing, utilize misdirected behavior. And I want to keep them out of the criminal justice system. And that's what we do. And thank you once again for this honor. It's not for me, it's for my program and the kids that have earned this. Thank you. Agenda item number five, proclamation designating May 21st through the 27th as National Safe Voting Week. And as a 50-some-odd-year voter, I think I'll do this one. Oh, you're right. Bring your water wings. Whereas recreational boating is a fun and enjoyable and popular activity on the waterways of Palm Coast. And whereas the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary Lotto 41 in Palm Coast seeks to increase awareness of boating safety each year, kicking off its year-round efforts to promote safe boating each May during National Safe Boating Week. And whereas waterways do become crowded at times, and while a marvelous source of recreation, boating to the unprepared can be a risky sport. Not knowing or obeying the navigation rules or the nautical rules of the road, drinking alcohol or taking drugs while operating a boat, or choosing not to wear your life jacket can result in accidents and even tragedy. And whereas, on average, 700 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the United States. Approximately 70% of these fatalities are caused by drowning. And whereas the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not the boat, equipment, or environmental factors. And whereas a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today if they had worn their life jackets. And whereas today's life jackets are more comfortable, more attractive, and more wearable than styles years past, and deserve a fresh look by today's boating community. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the City of Palm Coast to hereby declare May 21st through May 27th as National Safe Boating Week, and urge all citizens who vote to support the goals of the North America Safe Boating Campaign, to wear their life jackets and to practice safe boating habits. Sign this third day of May, 2016. My pleasure to sign it as mayor. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir.
Say a few words.
Boating accident statistics show that drowning is the single biggest cause of death in recreational boating accidents, accounting for more than 70% of boating deaths. The great majority of these drownings were precipitated by unexpected entry into the water, which means the victim had no time to grab a life jacket before entering the water. Our data also show that over 80% of drowning victims were not wearing life jackets when found. We know from other data that most of those victims could have been saved had they been wearing a life jacket before the mishap occurred. As to reiterate what the mayor said, you can see, these are the modern kind of life jackets. They're very comfortable, they're not hot, and I guess I would ask, how much do you think your life is worth? These cost somewhere around $100 on average. If your life isn't worth that, maybe you don't need to be wearing them.
Thank you. Again. Say a few words.
Boating accident statistics show that drowning is the single biggest cause of death in recreational boating accidents, accounting for more than 70% of boating deaths. The great majority of these drownings were precipitated by unexpected entry into the water, which means the victim had no time to grab a life jacket before entering the water. Our data also show that over 80% of drowning victims were not wearing life jackets when found. We know from other data that most of those victims could have been saved had they been wearing a life jacket before the mishap occurred. As to reiterate what the mayor said, you can see, these are the modern kind of life jackets. They're very comfortable, they're not hot, and I guess I would ask, how much do you think your life is worth? These cost somewhere around $100 on average. If your life isn't worth that, maybe you don't need to be wearing them.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Agenda item number six, proclamation recognizing May as Civility Month. Whereas the open exchange of public discourse is essential to the democratic system of government, and whereas as a cornerstone of democracy, Americans observe certain rules of behavior generally known as civility. And whereas civility, derived from the Latin words civitas, meaning city, and civis, meaning citizen, is behavior worthy of citizens living in a community or in common with others, and whereas displays of anger, rudeness, ridicule, impatience, and a lack of respect and personal attacks detract from the open exchange of ideas, prevent fair discussion of the issues, and can discourage individuals from participation in government. And whereas civility can assist in reaching consensus on diverse issues and allow for mutually respectful, ongoing relationships. And whereas civility can uplift our daily life and make it more pleasant to live in an organized society. And whereas the city, county, and local government law section of the Florida bar urges the adoption of a pledge of civility by all citizens in the state of Florida, whereas by the city council of the City of Palm Coast that the month of May is proclaimed as Civility Month and that it calls upon all of its citizens to exercise civility toward one another. Sign this third day of May, 2016, City of Palm Coast, Mayor, John Nets, and accepting as counselor, William Reichman, even tempered in good nature, whom you never hear complain, who has the milk of human kindness by the court and everything.
Well, I could almost say that I'm speechless, but no one would believe that. No. But I want to thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. I can tell you, I've been doing this practicing for 33 years, and it has been my experience, as I'm sure that all of you can agree, is that not only does this proclamation represent the better way for all of us to do our jobs, I would submit that it is a more productive and efficient way to do our jobs. I have seen the best legal work done, I have seen the best governmental work done, the best civic work done, when we are doing it even when we disagree. We agree to disagree, and we treat each other with respect. And I do mean that sincerely to the members of the council and to the audience. That has been my experience in doing this for 33 years. And it's been my pleasure and privilege to work with this council, because I know that you all believe in this method of governing as well. So thank you.
Indeed.
Thank you.
I'm doing it. This has been my first photo. Let's not make it your last. Please. Let's get back to work. I will. We have to do a proclamation for the city manager, just so he gets involved in this.
I'm good down here, thank you.
Well, I can settle in. Agenda item number seven, presentation on the current year-to-date budget review. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, as you know, we have started the budget season this year. Actually, our budget process really goes year-round, because we tie it into our strategic action plan. Before we start looking at next year dollars and projections, it's always important to see where we are today. So today's presentation is a overview of the first six months of our current fiscal year and the current status of our financial condition. Chris Quinn, our finance director, will take it from here.
Thank you, Mr. Landon. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Okay. Technology is working. Very excited about that. This is our budget preparation timeline. We typically go through this with each step we take during the budget preparation process. January through March, we've already accomplished quite a bit, including finalizing the annual financial audit, our 10-year infrastructure plan, the citizen survey results, and the preparation of the annual progress report. April's an important month for us, and it just ended with our second quarter reviews, the annual strategic action plan update, which you'll be hearing more from Denise shortly, presentation of the year-to-date budget report, which is today, and departments begin their fiscal year '17 budget input, and that started about a week ago. We continue to work pretty hard through May through August, with July and August being a lot of heavy lifting, with meetings with city council about the budget, culminating in our budget workshops in September, and then October through December, we do our year-end closeout and end-of-year review. This is our 2016 budget by fund. It's a gross budget of just under $150 million. This graph represents our revenues by sources. The purple, large section there, charges for services, has traditionally been our largest single revenue source. That's things like water and sewer, stormwater, solid waste charges, building permit fees, charges to play at the golf course, the tennis center, anything that we charge a separate fee for. Adverum taxes, which are the yellow pie, represent about 11% of our revenue source. That also has been fairly consistent. Those tax revenues pay for three primary functions: fire and police protection, which is a little over 60% of the total use of property taxes. Most of the remaining funds go towards street park maintenance, things like the medians, the litter pickup, our street lighting program, of course, maintaining and cleaning all the parks. And a small portion goes towards capital projects, primarily in the stormwater fund.
Chris.
Yes, sir.
Your Honor, $7.7 million for fire protection. How much do the citizens of Palm Coast pay to the county for fire protection in addition to this?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but it's significant. It's in the millions.
Well, this, my point is, this is only part of what we, the citizens, pay for fire protection. In Palm Coast? In Flagler County, which includes Palm Coast.
Yes. County-wide, yes.
I can help with that answer. The Flagler County fire EMS budget is somewhere between $8.5 and $9 million this year, I believe. I know it's over, it's in the $8 million range. Obviously, that is spread out throughout the whole county and not just Palm Coast.
I understand.
But yes, Palm Coast residents pay a portion of that.
But my only point, Mr. Landon, is when you talk about how much tax money you pay for fire protection, this is not the whole enchilada.
Same is true with police protection also, obviously, yes.
Yeah, this is only the portion that comes directly out of City of Palm Coast property These are our citywide expenditures by category. Two of the largest traditionally parts of the pie are general operating expenses, anything from chemicals to office supplies to fuel that we need to keep the city running, and then capital outlay, which is the funds that go to all of our different capital projects that are allocated each year.
Personal services as personnel?
Personnel and all related benefits and taxes, yes. So look at our year-to-date revenues. Again, this is through March 31st, which is 50% of the year. This graph is on our five, what we call pass-through revenues, or revenues the city receives through the state. Primarily sales tax-type revenues. We have our local option fuel tax, small county surtax, which is part of the sales tax, half-cent sales tax, and the communication services tax. The reddish, pinkish, I'm not sure what color that is, bar, represents what we've actually collected. The green bar is actually our budget. And in all cases, with the exception of the state revenue sharing, we're actually...
a lot of heavy lifting, with meetings with city council about the budget, culminating in our budget workshops in September, and then October through December, we do our year-end closeout and end-of-year review. This is our 2016 budget by fund. It's a gross budget of just under $150 million. This graph represents our revenues by sources. The purple, large section there, charges for services, has traditionally been our largest single revenue source. That's things like water and sewer, stormwater, solid waste charges, building permit fees, charges to play at the golf course, the tennis center, anything that we charge a separate fee for. Adverum taxes, which are the yellow pie, represent about 11% of our revenue source. That also has been fairly consistent. Those tax revenues pay for three primary functions: fire and police protection, which is a little over 60% of the total use of property taxes. Most of the remaining funds go towards street park maintenance, things like the medians, the litter pickup, our street lighting program, of course, maintaining and cleaning all the parks, and a small portion goes towards capital projects primarily in the stormwater fund.
Chris.
Yes, sir.
Your honor, $7.7 million for fire protection. How much do the citizens of Palm Coast pay to the county for fire protection in addition to this?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but it's significant. It's in the millions.
Well, this, my point is, this is only part of what we, the citizens, pay for fire protection. In Palm Coast? In Flagler County, which includes Palm Coast.
Yes.
Countrywide, yes.
I can help with that answer. The Flagler County fire EMS budget is somewhere between $8.5 and $9 million this year, I believe. I know it's over, it's in the $8 million range. Obviously, that is spread out throughout the whole county and not just Palm Coast. But, yes, Palm Coast residents pay a portion of that.
But my only point, Mr. Landon, is when you talk about how much tax money you pay for fire protection, this is not the whole enchilada.
Same is true of police protection also, obviously. Yes.
Yeah, this is only the portion that comes directly out of City of Palm Coast property These are our citywide expenditures by category. Two of the largest traditionally parts of the pie are general operating expenses, anything from chemicals to office supplies to fuel that we need to keep the city running, and then capital outlay, which is the funds that go to all of our different capital projects that are allocated each year.
Personal services as personnel?
Personnel and all related benefits and taxes. So look at our year-to-date revenues. Again, this is through March 31st, which is 50% of the year. This graph is on our five, what we call pass-through revenues, or revenues the city receives through the state. Primarily sales tax-type revenues. We have our local option fuel tax, small county surtax, which is part of the sales tax, half-cent sales tax, and the communication services tax. The reddish, pinkish, I'm not sure what color that is, bar represents what we've actually collected. The green bar is actually our budget, and in all cases, with the exception of the state revenue sharing, we're actually ahead of budget through March 31st. And the state revenue sharing has an annual, kind of annual payment that we get every summer, kind of a true-up payment. So we'll probably be pretty close to budget once everything is said and done with that particular one. This next graph is just a history of our sales tax, taxable sales within Palm Coast and Flagler County. The blue bar is Palm Coast specifically. The red bar is the county, including Palm Coast. Over the last year, 2014 to 2015, we had growth of over 7% in taxable sales. This is extremely positive from an economic development standpoint and also to the city revenues.
Chris, does this include hotel taxes?
Only, only, anything that was charged, the local 7% sales tax. So it could be like in the restaurants and things like that, but any actual bed taxes or non-sales taxes would not be included in this.
Okay.
The next slide is our property tax collections. This is again through March 31st. We actually received a payment shortly after April 1st also. Those flow through the county, through the county tax collector. Right now, we're about 95% today of what our expected collections are. We usually don't have any issues with collecting our property taxes because of the way the tax system is set up, and I don't anticipate any issues for this coming year. This next graph is from our forecasting software that we use. There's a lot going on here, but the red dotted line is essentially our budget, where we expect our budget to be. The blue bar in March is accumulated year-to-date revenue through March 31st, and this is for our general fund, and you can see that the blue bar is right on the red line, which is right where we expect it to be. So we're pretty excited about that. For reference, the green line is last year's actuals, fiscal year 15, and the purple line is fiscal year 14 actuals. The utility fund as a whole, our budgeted revenues are just under $36 million. We've received about 46% of those revenues through March 31st, which is actually very good. The usage on utility revenues is build-in arrears, meaning that we're always kind of a month behind. The green dot you see in the bottom right, that's an indicator of how well we are doing compared to the budget. Obviously, green, we're at or better than budget. If you see a yellow indicator, that means we're starting to trend ahead of budget. If you see a red indicator, that means we're behind the budget.
And this is a enterprise fund, is it not?
It is an enterprise fund. One of the performance measures that we track is the number of commercial and residential utility bills. The March column, right in the middle, from 2013 up through 2016, represents accumulated utility bills issued by the city through March 31st, and then the graph is reflective of those numbers, and you can see we continue to have growth in the number of new utility accounts billed each year. Again, a very positive economic indicator. Our utility fund revenue forecast, this one's a little tough to see, because the green and the red dotted line are right on top of each other, and you can see the most important part of it is that the blue bar for March is trending a little bit ahead of the forecast Our building fund revenues, again, this is the revenues collected as it relates to building and development within Palm Coast. We're actually a little bit ahead of where we expected to be at this point, at March 31st. 54% of our total budget has been received. One of the indicators that we kind of look at pretty closely are single-family permits. Again, if you look at the March column, those are accumulated, numbers of single-family permits issued through March 31st. Again, we're seeing growth year-over-year. In fact, we've had a pretty big April, which isn't reflected here yet, but things are looking pretty good in this particular area. And again, our forecasting graph, again, you'll see kind of the green and red overlap there, but again, the important part is that our March blue bar is ahead of the line, above the line. Now we'll look at our year-to-date expenditures. This graph represents the general fund expenditures. Again, the red dotted line is our budget, and as we talked about a little bit earlier, our revenues were trending really well, and here you can see our expenses are just below the budget line, so that blue March bar is below the red dotted line.
Can you tell us what happened in 14?
Yes. Actually, in the purple line, which is 2014 line, that's when the transfer took place from the general fund to the capital projects fund for the construction funds for this city hall administrative building.
Gotcha.
So that was kind of a one-time event. Some of our functional areas, expense-wise, administration and finance, includes a number of individual divisions, city clerk's office, city manager's office, city attorney, HR, purchasing, communications, and finance. This again is the expense budget through March 31st. We're at 44% of the expense budget, and then thus the green dot. Community development, which includes code, planning, construction management, engineering, and the building department. As part of that, when you look at that function as a whole, again, we're at 43% of the total budget through March 31st, which is really, really good, a green dot. Public safety, this is our first yellow dot. This is the fire department and our law enforcement contract with the sheriff's office. We're actually at 51%, a little bit ahead of the 50% or less that we would expect to be, but this is really because the sheriff's office contract, we pay it one month in advance, so we've actually paid through April as of March 31st. That will even itself out by the end of the year, and we really don't anticipate this being an issue by the end of the year.
So what would it take to make that yellow dot be green?
If we paid the sheriff in arrears.
Okay. They don't want that.
They don't want that. Our park and recreation budget, which includes our park and recreation programs, the tennis center and the golf course, as a whole, 42% of the total budget. This budget is fairly seasonal. It does take a jump, especially in the summer months, and the park and recreation area with things like summer camp and a lot of the summer activities. But again, all the projections are good in this area. Looks like we'll be within the total budget. Our public works budget, which includes all the streets and parks maintenance, facilities maintenance, fleet, and stormwater maintenance that we see out in the community, we're at 47% of the total budget through March 31st. This one's a fairly large budget, a little over $14.5 million in total, so we're looking pretty good there also.
Chris, can I ask a question? It just popped in my mind. If you can go back one slide to the parks and recreation, this is including the tennis and golf course. What amount is offset by revenue here?
The budgeted revenues for the golf course are somewhere around $1.2 million for the year, out of that $3.8 million. And then the tennis center revenues are somewhere around $200,000 for the year, roughly.
About $1.5 million.
About $1, just on those two. And then, of course, the community center rentals and those fees also are revenue generating. And then these are utility expenses, water, wastewater operations, and customer service. Year-to-date, we're at about 39% of the budget, kind of low, and this is really because there's a real seasonality to the utility budget. Kind of take a look here. You can see that we're actually below what we budgeted, and that kind of shows here, we're well below the red line. One of the things to keep in mind is that the summer months are some of the toughest months to kind of budget, because if it's extremely dry, we have to pump a lot more water. We've actually seen that recently. Richard had a report today for, I think it was a month through March, where we had some higher-than-normal water that we had to produce because of the, really weather-related, and also weather-building-related, more people here using water, you know, also development-related. But in the summertime, if there's a lot, a whole lot of rain, the sewer plant runs almost double time, and those expenses ramp up quite a bit. So it really is, the months of May through September are probably our biggest months in terms of a little bit of an unknown as to what impact the weather is going to have on the overall utility budget. Our information technology budget, this is another area where we've got the yellow dot. We're running a little bit ahead of budget. This is typical, though, for this particular area, because we pay most of our annual maintenance fees for all of our software at the beginning of the year. Most of those are due within the first quarter. That's somewhere in the area of $350,000. That's paid right within the first few months of the year, so it doesn't really smooth out. But again, by the time we get to the end of the year, this is normal for these guys as of March 31st. I don't really anticipate there being an issue here. So this is just a summary of all of the operating budgets in total, not including any capital costs. In total, we're at 43%. Here's some of the citywide projected forecasts. This is total salaries and wages. Basically, the blue bar is right on the red bar, right where we expect to be. Operating expenses, again, citywide. The blue is hitting the red, which is exactly what we want to see. We don't want to see that too far off. Our capital budgets, this one's a little tougher than regular operating budgets, because capital projects start at all different times and end at all different times in the year, but the capital projects in total are, the revenues related to those projects are at or above the targets that we anticipated, and so far, our spending is at or below our budgeted spending for all of our capital projects. And this would be something generally that city council would see if there was any real budget issues related to capital projects. Those work orders, change orders, come back to city council.
Chris, how much of the revenues are rollovers from the previous fiscal year?
I can tell you that back at the beginning, Mr. Maguire, if you don't mind. I just have a couple more slides, and I'll go back and get that number. I don't want to give you the wrong number. This is total expenditures, all funds. This is capital expenditures, operating expenditures, every expenditure we have, and again, because of the timing and nature of capital projects, you can see we're pretty well below the bar. But again, this is kind of typical when you're looking at the budget projections versus spending, when you're looking at capital projects. So as, for instance, the wastewater treatment plant, which is a fairly large, expensive project, really hasn't started yet. So even though we've budgeted for it, we have no expenses against the budget. Mr. Maguire, if you don't, I'm going to go back here to the graph. This was our revenue graph we took a look at earlier. This kind of slice right here, that's, I know it's hard to see, but at the top, it's called appropriated fund balance, or 6%. It's, I guess it's, I'm not even sure what color that is, but it's between the taxes in yellow and the blue debt proceeds.
Salmon.
I guess it's a brownish color. That's actually the portion that's rolled over from the previous year. That's a fancy term for last year's leftover. Thank you.
In various funds?
I'm sorry?
That's just cumulative of various funds?
Yes, cumulative of various funds, yes.
And...
Mr. Lorenzo.
Chris, included in that is some capital funds that may have been intended to be used. The project hasn't come yet, right? So it's, it can be deceiving at times, because there could be a large lump of money that is going to be spent on that project as soon as it gets started.
Correct, correct. And we do the best we can, you know, we're trying, usually when we're working on the budgets in June, we work with the capital projects and the project managers, try to estimate an ongoing project that's going to be over multiple years. Okay, how much of that is actually going to happen this current year? And if we come up a little short or a little over, that affects the carryover to the next year of those funds that were budgeted for that. Got one more slide. Just our looking-ahead slide, again, just wanted to finish up here. The next few weeks, we'll have actually the educational, a number of educational presentations relating to the budget for everybody, the public, staff, and for council. Then again, July and August will be a lot of heavy lifting culminating in our September budget workshops. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Chris. Great job. Counselor, questions, comments?
None.
Thank you. Are we going to have the handout that you make every year for the budget?
Yes, we have them prepared. We have the handouts prepared, the glossaries prepared. They'll all be ready.
I commend you on explaining the budget in layman terms.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number eight, resolution approving additional city council priorities for fiscal year 2016, 2017. Mr. Landon.
Mayor, City Council, as you know, part of our strategic action plan is, obviously, before we prepare the budget, is to have discussions with you about this coming year's priorities. Always have to stress, and I know that Denise will do the same, is that these, which you see tonight, will be new priorities, and we have a lot of them already in the pipeline, but each year, we complete some of them, and then you all add to the list. And so tonight is hopefully the final step, because you've seen this a couple of times in workshops, and staff has met with you one-on-one, and hopefully, we get consensus tonight as to which one of these proposals will actually be added to city council's priorities. Denise will walk us through kind of a short summary of the process and then final action.
Thank you, Mr. Landon. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. So where we are at in the process is that we brought the National Citizen Survey, the annual progress report. Of course, this is a strategic action plan evaluation step leading into the budget. Now, what is the evaluation process? We do this annually to bring to city council, what have we accomplished, what is the process, what is our progress? And so the SAP team meets individually with city council, and we talk about, how did we do last year? And, sorry about that, losing my slides. Chris missed it?
Yeah, Chris missed it.
Okay, so the evaluation process, just to pick up where we left off with the progress. So we meet with each city council member, and we look back. So we provide a leadership guide, and that leadership guide is to serve as a toolbox to city council in trying to provide the information that can best equip council members with looking at our progress, but also thinking about where are we going into the future. And again, our strategic action plan process is a tool, it's a roadmap to implementing our vision. And so we provide in that leadership guide a measuring results document, and I would definitely encourage the public or anybody interested in this overall process to look over the measuring reports document. It's comprehensive, it's very impressive, you can read it, you can understand it, and it really gets into the mechanics of how the strategic action plan is woven through our organization, not only through the budget process, but through metrics, performance management, and pretty much along the lines of our daily duties, but as Mr. Landon said, it captures a small portion of what we do. And so you also will have the end-of-year progress report. That's the nuts and bolts of what we've accomplished in the last fiscal year, so you'll see all the performance measures, and that will be divided according to goal and department responsibilities and even team responsibilities. And that's a management tool that equips department managers, staff, city manager, to look at our progress on a quarterly basis and see, do we need to maneuver based on what we're having accomplished or what we're not getting accomplished? And it helps us keep tap on the pulse of our budget commitments. And so we're not waiting until the end of the fiscal year and have this aha moment that maybe we need to adjust along the way. So that's also a report that city council received as part of their toolbox and knew this year, because we're in our second fiscal year of actually having priorities adopted or executed through city council, we provided a report card. And so that was an inventory of the priorities set by city council, and to the merit of what city council is doing right now, we receive feedback as we're having these interviews, one-on-one, and then also during workshops, and that feedback is not just put to the side... And that feedback is not just put to the side, it's captured and we use that to move forward even without those priorities set. And of course, that's why we're here tonight, is looking at those priorities moving forward. So the SAP report card, because it is brand-new, I just want to spend a little bit of time on that. So talking about what we've accomplished just coming out of the last fiscal year, we had 404 performance measures. Okay, so those are actions on behalf of our staff. They're assignments. They could range from numerous different projects, some that happened just in one fiscal year, or those that actually happened over numerous fiscal years. But we keep looking at them again, and this is an ability for us to look at how we're doing and adjust accordingly. So in that fiscal year, we have 404 performance measures, just again, a small segment of what we do. And of those 404 performance measures, 31 counts priorities. Now, those are 31 different actions associated actually with 17 priorities. So just by the sincere math behind that, so 17 priorities, but 31 things happening behind those priorities. So currently, in this fiscal year, that we're operating under, 439 performance measures and 19 priorities are set. Of those 19 performance measures are currently being, taking action on underway. And as you'll notice on the gauges, we like to call it the gauge, but sometimes they're called dashboards, this is also a very impressive tool that has migrated from the measuring results document. And we have six long-term goals. And each of the goals that we have, those performance measures are basically married to a goal. And so if you had 20 performance measures, how many of those 20 are we hitting the mark on? How many do we get completed? And that's what you see with the red, yellow, and green gauge. So you can see of the last fiscal year, we were in the green, meaning many accomplishments, many things getting completed of those 404 performance measures. So over the course of the last couple of months, we've been working with city council and we wanted just to provide a timeline leading up to tonight. So city council interviews started the end of March and we met with each of you once or twice. And we brought to workshop that feedback that we received. And we weren't a filter. So if you brought something to our attention, we tried to deliver that in a way that was meaningful to council, but truthful to what council gave to us in feedback. So we had the first workshop on April 12th and then we had our second workshop most recently. And with the additional feedback provided by council, we're at tonight of what we heard that was brand-new and that we're looking to city council to adopt at, basically, the action that we proposed. And so from that priority being set, what does that mean? So you adopt a priority. And so that really tells staff that, okay, council, the majority council says, we want you to look into this priority. And what that really means to staff is that we say, okay, how do you get that done? Because you don't want to set a priority that financially may not be feasible. So we go into this process of saying, okay, these steps have to happen, this is what it means, budget, resources mined, and then it comes back to you at the budget process adoption. So from here, we're looking at investigating and then it doesn't formally become a priority into adoption process and you take action in that step. So as part of the proposed resolution, there's Exhibit A. And from the last workshop, we captured six points of interest that were totally new to what we call the strategic action plan process. And so what we're looking to city council tonight at your discretion of taking action is either by ballot or by voice vote. So we have provided materials and I just looked to city council, Mayor Nets, to give direction on how you want that action actually taken tonight.
Counsel, you have an option. You've got a ballot in front of you or we can do show of hands, whatever you feel most comfortable with. One thing I would like to point out, though, that all of these are worthy endeavors, but you can't do everything all at once. And if something does not go on the priority list, it does not mean that it's not desirable, it's not worthwhile, it wouldn't be a benefit for our community. It simply means that other things are going to take precedence in the budget. You can't do everything all at once, so.
Your honor, I recommend we use the paper ballot.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, can I just say on number two, I had spoke with Mr. Landon, who went and had them look at what I was talking about at that area that turned out it wasn't a wet ditch. It is something that we need to actually look at, but he gave me the other option of an airboat chemically treating it, and he was going to get a price for that, but I just didn't want it to look like we're, I'm trying to put fences around it. We realized that wasn't going to work, so we came up with a new plan.
Great.
If I could just follow up, it's...
Now, does that, does this revised revision become a priority? Is this something that we're going to do as part of our ongoing?
It really is a canal, but it's kind of an isolated canal that doesn't, you know, so yes, we agree, we need to treat it like all our other canals that we treat. So we were planning on moving forward with that. You're welcome to make it as a priority, but I, my opinion, all canals should be treated the same.
It shouldn't be on the list at all because we're going to do it anyway?
Yeah, and then if we can't for some reason, we'll bring it back to you, then you could have, you know, give us direction. But if we can treat it like every other canal, then we'll just go do that because that's our program. So I think bringing it to our attention was very helpful. And I would suggest you give us a chance to just tie it into our canal program, maintenance program. And once again, if not, then we'll bring it back and then we can talk about what other alternatives are, if that's okay with you all.
Yeah. I have one question, Mr. Mayor. Number five, so I'm good with this, develop a plan for emergency communication upgrades in consultation with Flagler County and other partners, but that's, I'm really more concerned with the actual performance measure that follows. You know what I mean? So yes, I want to do this, but if it's not, I want to see the, you know, the exact steps so I could approve, I could vote yes on this now and then when it comes, I don't really know that this is going to, the implementation is going to have a budget effect, but looking into it really shouldn't have much of a, I don't believe.
Right. A little further background, once you establish priorities, and Denise kind of said you might have 19, 17 priorities, but we'll have 31 action steps to try to accomplish those priorities. Once you do your job, then we either turn it over to a department or one of our teams to put together a strategy or approaches to how we will get that accomplished. And then we, with your priorities, report back to you how we're doing, at least once a quarter on those. In this one, because of how visible it is and how, what an economic impact it could have, not just on the coming budget year, but future, city council will definitely be hearing about this one on an ongoing basis. So yes, we'd be happy to bring to you what the team comes up with as far as what the actual measurements are and strategies to accomplish this goal.
I have a question on number five also. We've had some attempts at conversation with the county about the communication system. We have no input, or very little input into what the county does, it's their system. Am I interpreting this as to saying, this is what we're going to do internally to be sure that we're prepared for whatever the county does? Is that...
There's kind of a, two very important elements, big picture, you know, elements. One of them is what you might call the backbone. That's the towers, that's the antennas that allow the radios to communicate. And then each one of the different entities, whether it's the city, the county, have their radios that have to communicate with them. Those radios are our responsibility. The backbone is the county's responsibility, but obviously we have to coordinate those discussions so that, you know, they're compatible. There is conversations going on between the cities, the county, sheriff's office, all of those parties right now. And what we really are trying to focus on is our own system with, you know, we have, we're developing an inventory of exactly what we have, but trying to make sure that whatever we have is going to be compatible with the new system at the county. The county has to put in a new system, so it's important we work together.
Mr. Landon, this item just says, develop a plan.
Yep.
Doesn't say implement anything or take any action, says make a plan.
Oh, yeah, this one, we have to develop a plan and then implement it. That's going to take, it's going to be over multiple years with...
All we're asking here for is to see a plan.
The first step is try to determine where we're going before we start going there.
But the understanding is that the planning process itself requires staff time. This is not a no-budget item.
That's true.
And putting it in a priority and giving it performance measures keeps it on track.
That's the goal. That's what all, many of this...
Because this has to be on track.
Yes.
Yeah, but this one's got to be. I mean, we don't want to get...
And actually, I don't know how many people put in number five, because you said if it was more than one person that put it in. But even for our own communications with our phone system, could be part of that and putting money aside for that. I don't know how you would put money. I know we have money already that we put aside for county that they have, but just having extra money that we're putting in there now that we know it's coming sooner than later.
Yes, all of that, the plan has to include the financial plan and how much money we set aside, because these are the type of things that historically we've always paid cash for and we've already got that plan to move forward. But, so when you say develop a plan, that includes the financial side of the equation.
For me, this number five says two things. One, it's been reported that we are considering going it alone. And this says, it's our plan is to develop this in consultation with Flagler County. Okay, so that's the first thing we're saying, that we wish to work with Flagler County and our partners on this. And then it's, the other part is the inventory of the radios, which ones are going to be able to be used in the future because they can be upgraded. And so we have an understanding of, when it comes to our responsibility for those radios, how much it's going to cost and how, over some period of time, that we're going to need to budget for it and then implement the program once the program is set.
Absolutely.
And those would be elements of the plan.
Yes. Will said.
I have a question on number six also. Our Citizens Academy is a stellar program. Many other governments have copied it or modeled themselves upon it. I'm hoping that this is a supplement to it, not intended to be a replacement of it.
I agree. Mayor, I would encourage you to feel welcome to change the wording as part of your resolution to state exactly that. No, we have not intended in any ways, I mean, like you said, our Citizens Academy is a...
Of unintended consequences.
Yes, so feel free to change the wording, to create a visual Citizens Academy program that supplements or...
I'm going to put the word supplemented in there.
Okay, and that would, that'd be great. That was our intent, so.
Just want to be sure.
Yeah, those kind of clarifications are good, so we're on the same page.
All right. Everybody got their piece of paper? Mark it up?
We're skipping two then?
Well, it's not a priority, well, hold that in abeyance, because if we, if under our current operating protocols, we can deal with that particular ditch, then it doesn't need to be a priority. If it turns out we can't, we still have time at budget time to stick some more dollars in to deal with it in some other fashion.
So I would...
Put it out for the moment, but you can...
We'll need to bring something back to you because it is, it is a problem for that neighborhood.
So would there be any reason we couldn't check off all of them? I mean, I think maybe price-wise, they are all possible.
Yes, none of these are saying that we actually are going to spend any money on these, because you're going, the next step is have to include it in the budget if it's not there now. One other thing, but hopefully you all have your names on these, did we include the names? Because it is a public record, so you do need to have your names on them. Yep.
I had the answers written on my hand.
Mr. Reishman, even though this was a, essentially an internal decision-making process by city council, it is a resolution. Should we have public comment on this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Hand it in. Virginia, do you want to read off the results?
One moment, please.
Okay.
Mayor, City Council, why she's doing that, just a little after citizen comment, the idea is to adopt the resolution with the understanding that the ones that have at least three votes supporting it would be included in that resolution.
Right.
Virginia, I don't know how else to stall, so no.
You're fine. We have five for number one, zero for number two, five for number three, four for number four, five for number five, three plus two maybes for number six.
All right. So before we take action on a resolution supporting those items, would anyone from the public like to be heard on agenda item number eight? Come up to the podium, give us your name, limit your contribution to three minutes.
Jack Carroll, can I ask, is this the first time you're looking at these points of interest, or have you reviewed them prior to coming to the meeting? Because, you know, you can't make a decision in five minutes.
Get you an answer to that question. Next speaker.
John Brady, Palm Coast. Thank you, Mayor. Last time I was at this podium, I asked a question concerning the city debt. And you responded that the city has no debt. Well, page 74 of the annual budget says that those separate funds are running up a lot of debt.
Mr. Brady, excuse me for one moment, is that on this resolution?
Well, so you're talking about things you want to do. So I'll wait.
Yeah, well, I just want to be sure you're on target. All right, continue.
I would suggest taking away the credit card from the utility fund, which shows an outstanding principal of almost 150 million. My question here, who is in charge of the utility department? There are many other questions about the rates charged and customers being turned off. I would suggest that since in seven months, there will be a newly, new majority in both the city council and the county council, that all major decisions be left to the new group. I suggest this for two reasons. The newly elected may be able to have a more positive working relationship. And number two, the newly elected will not have to accept whatever this lame group, the lame duck groups choose. Allowing the newly elected to hear from the people and act accordingly just seems like the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. On these six items.
Yes.
Thank you.
Courtney McDonald, for number four, for the Durella continuous street lighting on major roads, does that mean that if there's no streetlights on the major road now, they're going to add them in? For example, Royal Palm, half of it's lit, half of it's not. And then number two, because Mr. Landon said it's a canal compared to a ditch, are we going to put fencing around all of the canals in Palm Coast? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. You're going to approach the podium, we'll close the public portion of the meeting, go back to council. Take them in reverse order. As my understanding of the approval of number two is that we're not going to look at fencing, we're going to look at other options of improving potential safety for those ditches. We're not, at this point, I'm not considering fencing that ditch or any ditch. It would be astronomically expensive and I don't think it would be particularly effective to try to do it. What was the other?
Number four.
Number four, street lighting plan. Once upon a time, we had all intentions of developing a, implementing lighting along your major corridors or arterials and so on and so forth. When we got into the budget crunch of the Great Recession, we put that one on hold. This is rejuvenating that and the plan is to provide continuous lighting along your major roads. What you don't want to have happen is light, dark, light, dark, light, dark. That confuses people and your eyes have difficulty adjusting. So it is probably a long-range plan because street lighting, like so many other things, is fairly expensive and it's not a one-time expense. You put them in today, you pay the electric bill, ad nauseam. So, but yeah, that would be the plan, to develop a plan... So, but yeah, that would be the plan, to develop a plan to gradually implement street lighting. To Mr. Brady's comment, there is no way that I'm going to sit on my hands for almost six months and not operate this city. The utility budget is not a municipal budget, it's an enterprise fund. It is separate and apart from the city. Who operates it? Richard Adams, probably one of the foremost authorities on utilities nationwide. He and his staff continually get year after year awards for outstanding capabilities. We have a utility department very well run. The costs are what they are. And I mentioned once before the history of why the city took on utility debt, not taxpayer debt. There's not one penny of taxpayer dollar involved in that debt. It is paid for by the users. And if anybody wants me to reiterate the history of why we got into this, I'd be happy to do it after the meeting. But it's certainly not something that, that we've done, that we ought to correct. What we've done is probably the best possible thing for the welfare, the ongoing welfare of our community. All right, back to city council, additional questions, comments? Jack had a question.
Had you seen this before?
Have, oh, any number of times. This has been discussed at workshops. Uh, Denise, you want to go quickly give a synopsis of how we've looked at these?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, generally from the process, it, it really start, it never stops, let's put it that way. And at least from the evaluation, it kicks off in March. So what you have showing on the slide is, we begin with the interviews and that again brings information to staff on direction and trying to capture the feedback from city council to deliver at the workshop. So on April twelfth, we had our first workshop, and it was heavy with material, but talking about what we were already doing and then capturing what was new. We took from that step into April twenty-sixth, the most recent workshop. That got us to what we are today with consideration by city council of the six priorities.
And I might point out that although the, this, this timeline shows March twenty-first council interviews begin, that is the culmination of a year of city council looking at these issues, discussing them, corresponding with residents, getting feedback from the public. This is when we begin to formalize the conversations that we've had throughout the year. It's an ongoing process.
Mayor, if I, if I may, you know, this, this is actually a fairly unique process, you know, where we incorporate the departments, our team, city council, the whole organization and the community with citizen survey. In fact, this has been unique enough and innovative enough that Denise, a couple of years ago, was asked to present this process at the state level at City Managers Conference. And at, after that, it got word at the international conference, and she was asked to present this process at the international conference as a best practice. So this has gotten good, positive attention both statewide and, and at the national level because it is an ongoing process where we try to involve everybody possible in decisions. So these type of decisions you're making now is just, like, like you said, kind of that final step in a very long ongoing process.
At this point, we're back to council for consideration of a resolution. Virginia, help me with this, that would include items one, three, four, five, and six.
Your honor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution priorities as voted on by the city council.
Second. Moved and seconded.
Before, before a vote, could I get clarification? Item six, we're going to include that that would be a supplement?
With the word supplemental in, that's at least.
Everybody's in agreement with?
Yes, that was her three and two maybes. The maybe has to do with supplemental. She had three anyways, so.
Okay.
Okay, so yeah, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries that objection. This brings us to the consent agenda. This is the opportunity for city council to take action on a number of items together, items that are typically not particularly controversial. But we always want to offer the public the opportunity to speak on any one of these items and/or to ask council to remove an item from the consent agenda for special consideration. Anybody like to have council remove any one of the items? Items nine through twelve. You're going to approach the podium, we'll close the public portion, go back to council. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries that objection. This brings us to the regular public participation portion of the meeting. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on any item not on today's agenda. Please come up to the podium, give us your name, limit your contribution to three minutes.
Louis McCarthy, Palm Coast. I wasn't going to get up, but I think it's necessary to. For the city council to lay down and do nothing for the rest of the year is sheer craziness. Each one of y'all was elected to the full term. And I think y'all do a magnanimous job, a hard job sometimes. But just to sit down and wait for others to come in and pick up, because a lot of times you come in and you got to learn first. And then pick up, or maybe not pick up. So I don't think that's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
But if we do that, then does that make us qualified for federal office?
Next speaker, please.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. Uh, I listen sometimes with the city when we talk about Florida Park Drive, and somehow it seems like it's just another drive, just like any other street in Palm Coast. And I'd like to bring some facts or some data to view here. Florida Park Drive is the only residential street in Palm Coast that is between two parkways that the city created the turn lanes from those parkways onto the residential street that would allow this two-mile road to be a thoroughfare to exchange traffic between the two parkways. Florida Park Drive is the only residential street in Palm Coast that the city stated in two thousand and three, the traffic was too heavy, and then reclassified it as a major collector road, allowing eight thousand cars per day, five hundred and sixty trucks per day, which is harming the health of the residents. Florida Park Drive is the only residential street in Palm Coast that is, uh, the residents', uh, safety is endangered by eight thousand cars and, per day, and five hundred and sixty trucks per day, making it almost very dangerous for residents to exit out of their driveway. Florida Park Drive is the only residential street in Palm Coast with eight thousand cars per day and five hundred and sixty trucks per day, sixty feet from children's bedroom, where traffic fumes, noise endanger their health and lives. Florida Park Drive is the only residential street in Palm Coast that the city violates its own policies and ordinance whereby supporting harm to the residents from the fumes and the noise, making it acceptable within the city. Florida Park Drive is the only residential street in Palm Coast where the city will support programs of a healthy living, fight against cancer, and safety for children, and then supports traffic fumes, noise to harm the residents of the, and health of the kids on Florida Park Drive, and increase the volume and kinds of traffic. Florida Park Drive is the only residential street in Palm Coast that has repeatedly asked the city council to protect the health of the residents, and the city has ignored warnings published by the CDA, EPA, WHO, and numerous universities around the world. Florida Park Drive is the only residential street in Palm Coast where the city has harmed the residents by actively supporting and making possible the increase of the volume and kind of traffic. Now residents on Florida Park Drive are expected to allow another increase in traffic with cut through, shortcut traffic exiting from Palm, Palm Harbor Boulevard Parkway to go to the Island Walk or Holland Park as a shortcut. The city council should be more about serving and protecting the people. Florida Park Drive is the only street in Palm Coast that the city actively, actively supports the residents' health being harmed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Robert McDonald, Palm Coast. This question is to Councilman McGuire, Councilman Moe Nobile, Councilman Di Lorenzo, and Councilwoman Shipley. I would like to know how you all personally feel about the idea that my daughter brought up a month ago about having candidates for city council, as well as the mayor, background checked and fingerprinted. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, my name is Sims Jones, resident of Flagler County. And my concern is the fire department, police department, like we're talking about the radios and all. And I think there should be one unified department. I'm from New York, and we had the New York City Fire Department. But we did have outlined cases and, you know, small communities that had their volunteer fire departments and all. But in order to better function and better you to be working in those outlined areas, they used to tap in to the fire depart, the city of New York's fire department system. And I think for the, um, the Palm Coast Fire Department, Flagler Beach Fire Department, the county fire department, if it was one unified thing, you wouldn't have the problem or the situation of now Palm Coast may have to spend extra money to come up with the system that the county is using. Because if the county system is the one that we're all going to be piggybacking on, it may cost us more money to, when the county upgrades, because even though I love the county and they're nice people, the county's thinking about the county. And the county's not really thinking a whole lot of Palm Coast. They will do what they think is best for the county. Now Palm Coast may have to now play catch-up, spend extra money to get the system that matches up with the county. So I think we should look more into unifying the system and let it just be under one umbrella. Then we don't have to worry about upgrading systems, making things better, changing things or whatever. Because once the county system, whatever it is, comes into fruition, when we work with, we're all working together. And when we're all working together, things work better, properly, and in order. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Next speaker.
Jack Cowan. At, at the workshop, you brought up the meeting for the, for the eleventh of May with the county regarding decriminalization of marijuana. Let me, let me say this, right? There was a statement made that if you arrest somebody with a minimum amount of marijuana, it carries throughout their whole life. If you arrest a guy for being a burglar, it carries for the rest of his whole life. Now, a miniscule amount of marijuana comes from a large packet of marijuana. You can't walk up to a dealer and say, give me ten cents worth of marijuana. You either buy the bag, whichever size it is, and you use it. So when you find somebody with a miniscule amount of marijuana, that means he already consumed the majority of the bag. Now, when somebody walks up to a dealer and buys a bag of marijuana, regardless of his age, he knows it's against the law. He doesn't say, well, you know, it's, it's, it's good, I can have it. They're not, no, he's going to do nothing. It's against the law. It's against the law if you're five years old or if you're ninety-five years old. It's against the law. And if somebody wants to break the law, then it's their responsibility, not your responsibility to worry about their future. If they want to buy a bag of marijuana, then they know what the penalty is if they get caught. So you're talking about giving a summons instead of a, an arrest. Why don't you give a summons to a guy? What, what, forget about it. How are you going to determine legally that somebody is carrying a miniscule amount of marijuana if you don't search him? Now, if somebody's walking down the street and you search him, it's an illegal search. And then the city's wide open for, for a lawsuit. So there's got to be a crime or something that attracts the deputy, right? So now, if, if Mayor's driving drunk or under the influence, he gets arrested for that. So what do you do? You arrest him for one, and you give him summons for the other? That, you know, these things, a lot of these things, you, you got to think about before you start issuing or making the, whatever you're going to do about issuing a summons. Now, it's, don't worry about some kid that's going to be ninety years old and then he's, he's going to carry an arrest record for the rest of his life. If that's what he wants, that's what he does. And that's what you don't do for him. If he wants to break the law, if he wants to break the law, let him break the law and pay the consequences.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I'm Kyle Berry, I represent the Palm Coast firefighters, fifty-one firefighters, lieutenants, and their families. I'm speaking to you tonight due to the recent meter reports and other local government meetings about consolidation. And we're against it, and I want to tell you, I want to ask some questions. And we've had a lot of talk about the fire department and something else, and I'm just curious as to where is the problem? Over the past five years, we've increased our service provision, both emergency response and other safety programs for less money. We rank at the top of the citizen survey that we're trying to work off of year after year after year. We're not an EMS department, we're a fire department, and we also do EMS. It's a huge part of who we are, and we're good at it. But it's not all we are. We're fire, EMS, public education, fire prevention, and a laundry list of other things. There's two little boys in Flagler County right now that are alive because of a talk that we did at one of their schools. And we're recognized as the ISO ranking of two. Currently, that would be in the top one point one percent of the state of Florida. I'm not going to defend our operation of sending fire trucks with rescue CMS calls. It's the standard for our mutual aid partners, including Flagler County Fire Department, Flagler Beach, but as well as our neighboring departments to the north, to the south, to the west. Do you really believe that we should hand over our fifteen to twenty million dollars in hard assets to Flagler County? In nineteen ninety-eight, the Palm Coast Service District, District had to beg for resources. Do you want to beg? Or would you rather order my brothers and sisters to action? In nineteen eighty-five, we lost over a hundred homes. In nineteen ninety-eight, they were in the vicinity of sixty. Do you think that the fire weather is getting better nationally? That we're never going to have an incident like that again? Multiple times I've heard council refer to getting different stories from us versus them. Are our county commissioners privately lobbying to take over our fire department? In the spirit of government under the sunshine, I feel it'd be appropriate, if that's what's happening for you guys, to discuss it publicly here today. Finally, I want to appeal to your human side. Fifty-one men and women have committed to protect our eighty thousand citizens and abide by your leadership. Mr. Coffee has proposed anywhere from one to two million in annual savings. It depends on how far over the presidential should we go back to. These are all reductions in personnel stationed in Palm Coast. Best case, a resident in the north of Palm Coast and the students of, the residents of these areas in the north where they've talked about reducing the staff, and the students of Beltar Lamentary, Indian Trails Middle, and Matanzas High School would have the same fire protection in the future as the residents of some of the least incorporated areas in the county have today. That's best case. Worst case is there's no one up there. But make no mistake about it, the money saved from consolidation are from reduction in personnel. There's no like magic beam where one big government agency takes something over and all of a sudden it's cheaper. That's been the opposite of my experience. Our families are realtors, teachers, police officers, nurses, food servers, cooks, business owners, and we even have a lawyer, counsel. Our children range from my four-day-old to an officer at the Air Force Academy. When you consider this issue.
Fifteen seconds, sir.
Remember that these are real people, and their lives will be turned upside down. Finally, I ask that you show us the respect that we show to you, and you tell us whether or not you're for or against consolidation. I'm against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Congratulations, by the way, on the newborn.
Thank you very much, sir.
Good evening. Carmichael, Palm Coast. Thanks, Jack. I was going to sit this one out, but every year, 900,000-plus teenagers are caught with marijuana. Okay? They're using marijuana. They get arrested. And what happens after you get that criminal record? You can't work at McDonald's. You can't get a student loan. You can't-- you can't vote. So many things get taken away from you. You become, in a way, pushed to the sidelines in society, all because, like many of you, when you were younger, you experimented. Some of you, okay? Back then, the sheriff might have smacked you upside your head and taken you home to your parents. Now, they arrest you and they give you a criminal record, and the punishment that follows-- that does follow you the rest of your life. Now, comparing smoking marijuana, which I don't smoke, by the way, to burglary or other crimes, we tend to punish people for crimes that affect other people. If you burglarize someone's house, you are hurting somebody else. If you smoke marijuana, I think you're hurting yourself. We don't tend to punish those types of crimes because you do what you want to yourself in America. Decriminalization will end the-- end what we've been doing for 50 years, which is criminalizing addiction. And hopefully, we can move from-- make it a first step towards decriminalization of addiction so that we can then start dealing with the real problems of addiction in our society. For 50 years, we've been running in circles while the problem gets worse. If it were working, I wouldn't be here. I wouldn't say anything about it. But it's getting worse. Now, you have hard drugs moving from our inner cities into every suburban community in America. And some of us want to double down on a really stupid system where we turn kids into criminals. Because once you get that record, you set them on a path towards becoming a criminal because they can't work at McDonald's. You can't get a student loan. Your options become so limited, all because you were stupid enough to smoke that joint. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker. You'll approach the podium. We'll close the public portion of me and come back to council, but first, some comments. Although the comment was made on a different agenda item, again, I will reiterate my feeling that we were elected to serve. We will serve our full term. There's a cliche that I like to use. Even if you're on the right path, you'll get run over if you don't keep moving. And it's important that we keep moving. Florida Park Drive continues to be an issue for the residents, and it continues to be an issue for us. We're looking for some possible. My hope is, my fervent prayer is, that when we finally get the Old Kings Road widening accomplished, that will become the quickest, easiest path for people. Hopefully, that will resolve some of the problem. The issue of background checks, we've discussed it. We've talked to the supervisor of election. I've even talked to the state. Election laws are not established by the city of Palm Coast or Flagler County. They're statewide. And even if we were to do a background check, what would you then do with that information? We've had two speakers talk about the unintended consequences of a mistake in your early life and how it can follow you. We will conduct our elections, Flagler County will conduct its elections in accordance with the state laws, and if those nice ladies and gentlemen in Tallahassee see fit to require background checks, then they have-- they more than have the ability to require that of us, as they've shown time and time and time again.
Mr. Mayor, last time this came up, you also commented that correctly, that if there was something in a background check, the press would make that available to the public.
Also, if you have a felony, you can't vote. And if you can't vote, you can't run. Correct? You have to be a voter?
Interesting question. I'll check that one.
Yeah, that's right.
Yes, Mayor, you have to be a registered voter to run for office.
Okay. So if there's a significant problem, you won't be able to run in any event. All right. There was a discussion, and I wasn't clear whether the speaker was talking about consolidation of the fire department or police department or consolidation of the radio system. But the radio system issue goes far beyond police and fire. Many, many, many city employees not in the fire department use those radios on a day-to-day basis. We've talked about that. It's one of our priorities. The county owns the system. It is one system. But the county has partners in it, and together, we will work out the details.
Mayor, if I could add, we used to have two systems, but about six, seven, eight years ago, something like that, we combined them into one system. So the communication system is one system for all of Flagler County.
Now, we move on to the issue of marijuana. There's some misinterpretation of what is being proposed. It is inappropriate for us to use the term "decriminalization of marijuana" because we do not have the authority to do that. Only Tallahassee can do that. And even if Tallahassee were to do that, it still is a federal crime. What we're talking about, and we haven't even had the initial discussions, other than, I guess, with the county and its advisory board, we're talking about civil citations. I agree completely with what I've heard, that a mistake as a youth could travel with you for the rest of your life, and we ought to try and find some way to prevent that from happening. Clearly, the harsh marijuana penalties have not stopped individuals from purchasing and using that product. The concern that I have, and I've expressed this once before, is that if Flagler County reduces the penalty, or if Palm Coast reduces the penalty, and Bonnell does not, or Flagler Beach does not, or St. John's County does not, you have this very dissimilar way of dealing with the issues. If this truly is a worthwhile endeavor, once again, I think those men and women who serve us in Tallahassee can deal with this at a state level so that we don't have little islands of where marijuana is opposed and little islands where it's acceptable. I think a reasonable legislature in Tallahassee could come up with one statewide program that would fit us all. Comments about fire department consolidation? Start with a very, very simple understanding that there is a vast difference between much of Palm Coast and much of unincorporated Flagler County. We are an urbanized community, and the level of service that you need here, that you demand here, is higher. Take an extreme example. Out west, one farmhouse on 1,000 acres, if it catches fire, you may very well lose that house. But the likelihood of that fire spreading to adjacent homes and becoming an issue for more and more families, that's very unlikely. Here, with homes as close together as they are, it's a very, very different issue. And I think it's important to remember that our fire department, our fire department, the Flagler Beach Fire Department, the Bonnell Fire Department, the county fire department, they don't just put out fires. They do fire prevention. They do inspections of retail and commercial buildings. They do voluntary inspections in residential homes. They change batteries in your smoke detectors. They do fire prevention seminars. One of the reasons that we have low fire loss is because of very good fire prevention. I, for one, don't see any advantage to consolidation. If we were a homogeneous community, a homogeneous county, then yes, you could make a case for consolidation perhaps. But the level of service demanded in a residential community is very different than the level of service in an agricultural community. We have an East Flagler County mosquito control district. We don't want them. There is no West Flackler County mosquito control district. They choose a different level of service. Urban versus rural, I think that's the issue. I'm not sure that one size fits all. So--
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. DiLorenzo.
I don't remember this council ever discussing consolidation.
To the best of my knowledge, we never have.
No. There's never been a conversation about it, and then--
Neither conversation, certainly not any support for it. All right. That concludes that discussion by city council matters, not only agenda. Ms. Shipley, why don't we start with you, ma'am?
I do have a question regarding the strategic action plan. Things that we have on there that weren't new, and they say ongoing, we move them forward. One of the things I had asked for was something for the Little League, which we decided was ongoing. It's part of the next part of Holland Park. But since then, we've decided that wasn't going to happen, wasn't going to happen anytime soon. It wasn't going to be on the priority for next year, I thought was the understanding.
Well, let me, first of all, yes, now you're talking about a budget process because city council said that we needed to make some improvements out there to help. And so this year, additional batting cage, we created some T-ball infield. There was a variety of things we did. This coming budget season, I know as far as the capital plan, there's already discussions about the concession stand is old, and we're having some electrical problems, and it needs to be upgraded.
That's what I was going to ask about. I just wanted to see if we could put that in there somehow.
The park team is looking at those and plan to put together, yeah, not just for Little League, but, you know, we're talking about lighting for some of the lacrosse soccer fields. That's all part of the ongoing improvements out there. So during budget time is when you'll really, instead of just saying, "Yes, we'd like to look at it," you really put your money where your goals are. And there will be improvements at Indian Trails and at other parks, too, that you'll get a chance to look at during that process. So that's really the next major step.
That's all I have.
Mr. DiLorenzo.
I guess I'll continue on that. Are all the baseball fields lit at Indian Trails?
Yes.
So because we had a discussion last week, and I know we'll talk about it more in budget, but we talked last week about, you know, maybe it makes more sense to light the-- spend the lighting, the next set of lighting dollars on Indian Trails because of the volume of traffic that it gets, the usage that it gets compared.
All four of the diamonds, correct me if I'm wrong, Luanne, all four of the diamonds are lit, so they can be-- they can play at night. And a lot of times, they go on and have multiple games there in the evening and go on into the evening nighttime hours. So that is not the issue. Holland Park would be is that they can only play there until it gets dark, and then they, you know, unless you put lights out there. And then, as we talked about, the neighbors and the impact on the neighborhood would be a balancing act.
Right.
Anything else?
No.
Mr. Nobile.
I just have one thing. I knew I could count on Mr. Carr being here tonight, so I wanted to bring this up. I don't want to fully discuss it today, but I want to bring it up because I would like to discuss it at our next workshop, little workshop after that. I was on Florida Park Drive the other day and was there for a short period of time, and I noticed about four or five trucks come down the road. And they weren't local trucks. You know, there was Coke, there was Coors, there was a round one, I don't know if it was carrying oil or what. But I would like to see if we can go ahead and shut down through truck traffic on that road. I know, you know, what I'm thinking is you put up the signs, we patrol it for a month or so till everybody gets the idea, and then that's one step. And then the second step, hopefully, is when we widen Florida Park Drive. Hopefully, that alleviates some.
Old Kings Road.
Old Kings Road. That's right.
I don't think Mr. Carr wants us to widen Florida Park.
Are you sure? So I'd like us to get our information together, all of us, and have a discussion on that, maybe next week or a couple of weeks after that.
Mr. Nobile, that's-- you've actually already given us that task, kind of included in the whole safety traffic flow with the new interchange at Matanzas.
Okay.
And how it's going to go by the school. And now that you have Palm Harbor open--
Yes.
--and that if they're coming from the north, the delivery trucks, these semi-trucks, go into those gas stations, convenience stores--
Right.
--there's no reason why they can't use Matanzas and easily come right down and get to those businesses.
Correct.
So yes, we now have the opportunity to change some traffic patterns and traffic behavior, and we're actually starting to work on those. We've had those discussions, and it included the truck traffic for those deliveries. Clubs like the Portuguese-American Club, I mean, they're making deliveries there. Once again, they don't have to use Florida Park Drive anymore.
Correct.
And if they're going southbound because they got off at Matanzas, well, shame on them also if they're coming down to Palm Coast Parkway. That is all, that is part of what we're planning to do.
Can you give me an implementation update, then? Next week?
Yeah, I have talked to the team that's looking at that, but we'll come up with something. Another key element is the extension of Old Kings Road up to Matanzas.
Matanzas, yeah.
And then we will block off Forest Grove at Old Kings Road, that portion that goes in front of the high school--
Mm-hmm.
--which will create another, I mean, it would just, the traffic patterns would be totally different, totally better. And then Mr. Carmen will be, needs to be part of that, where we help truck drivers, we help people change their behavior and make it better for the residential streets. Yes, absolutely. We're looking, we're looking excited, we're excited about those possibilities--
Good.
--now that we have other alternatives.
To move it. Super.
So let us, I don't know if we'll be ready this time next week, but--
If it's not, then we're following, whatever.
Yeah, and maybe there's some things we can implement now. The game plan really was to have the Old Kings Road--
Okay. Well, if you could show me that, or show us that, and say, "Here's the timeline." You know what I mean? At least it's not just something floating--
Just as a reminder, this was also tied into school traffic and safety and working with the school district on how the students and the parents and buses and everybody gets to the high school and that whole area up there. You know, I was like, "Well, I'll do it as my update." But it's actually been kind of a fun to listen to people about, "Whoa," you know, Palm Harbor goes through now.
Yeah, good. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Wire.
Your Honor, out of respect for Civility Month, I withhold my comment.
I see you topped that, city attorney.
I would just comment on the invitation we had from the county for a meeting yesterday. We heard a presentation by county fire chief Petito, two guest chiefs, Mr. Coffey. It was interesting. I don't think it fully encompassed all of the options that we've talked about, but we did get, I believe, a commitment from the county to hold a joint meeting so that we can talk about options together. I am very much opposed to finding one option right off the bat, trying to beat it to get. There's many, many, many ways to deal with this issue, and I'm hoping that we will have an opportunity to discuss them together. Discussion by city attorney of matters not on the agenda.
No comments, Mr. Mayor.
Discussion by city manager of matters not on the agenda.
Let me continue with the opening of Palm Harbor Parkway. That was an exciting opening. The comments I've received, whether that's getting my hair cut or, you know, even council members of how, what a difference that makes. You come off of the interchange or you're driving down to the east on Matanzas, and instead of turning onto Old Kings Road in front of the high school, you can keep going straight, and it kind of angles off there. And how, a lot of people say, "Boy, I almost feel lost," until all of a sudden, wow, I'm back on the area. So it is making a huge difference. We are sending out a letter, if it may have already gone out today, to the people on Fern Mill. Did I get the name right? Fern Mill, Ferndale? The route that people found and have offered to have our crews go out and replace sod, sprinkler heads, mailbox, whatever it takes to, as long as it's in our public right-of-way to help bring that neighborhood back to where it was before it was used as a detour. Because it was definitely changing the whole traffic patterns there. Already have gotten positive feedback as far as, "Wow, what a difference." Already have gotten positive feedback as far as, wow, what a difference. With Old Kings Road extension, you can tell, you know, the signal is up, not operating yet, at Matanzas and the paving, the first layer is down on a good portion of it, that will also change things. So it is really starting to come together up there, and will have a major impact. The whole way of getting to and from the high school, starting next school year, will be different, and we're gonna work closely with the school district on that also. And then, of course, the thing we, we talked about impacting, or hopefully having an impact on Florida Park Drive. The other, two other things I have is, one, I mentioned it at workshop last week, but wanted to once again say congratulations to our utility department and winning the state championship once again. Let me get a couple of details up here, because I think this is one of the highlights for, for our utility. The tenth time that we've won a state championship in a competition called Top Ops Challenge, this is where they actually have to answer questions about the water treatment process. It's not a fun thing, it's, it's actually, yeah, I think they have a little fun at it, but it's chemistry and, and actual processes, so it's, it's actually an important learning experience. It's put on by the American Water Works Association. This gives them a free ride, in other words, the Florida Association sends them to the national championships, so the team will go on to the nationals, where they have won numerous times also. So I think that's, once again, very indicative of the dedication of, of our employees, in particular, in this case, our water treatment plant operators.
We are water nerds.
Yes. And, and if you ever talk to them, they truly, yeah, it's, it's amazing, their knowledge.
Get an email about that.
The, yeah, I'll put a plug in, I had our quarterly reports, our quarterly reviews and today, and, and we have joint forces with the Flagler County Schools, the Flagler Technical Institution, and our water operators are actually teaching classes there to give them the schoolwork that they need, or the, the training they need, so that they can become operators. And then we also have like an internship program, or kind of a trainee program, where they can come work at our plants to get the experience they have to have for that. And so trying to grow some of our own, so hopefully, we can keep them here in Palm Coast. And we're actually doing more and more of that with fire departments and other things, trying to coordinate. This, this week or next week, I have a, a meeting with some school officials about how we can improve our internship program, so if we have students coming from our schools here in Palm Coast, graduating, going off to college, and for the summer, coming back and working here, instead of staying in the college town and getting their summer internship there. So actually, part of the strategic plan for, that was a priority of city council, this is one of those ongoing priorities of city council, that's very consistent with the school's idea of trying to have their educational program actually be more practical towards businesses and keeping kids here so they can come back and get jobs. The flagship program is what I was looking for, so it's all tied into that, so I think that's a big deal. Last thing I have is just a reminder, once again, of Arbor Day celebration. It starts at eight AM with the 5K run, it starts at Central Park, and then the celebration itself starts at nine AM, once again, at Central Park, and it goes till 2:00 PM. You bring canned goods, you get a free tree, so help out people in need and get a free tree to plant, keep our Tree City, Tree City USA designation, so, Mayor, that's all I have for this evening.
In addition to bringing canned goods, a tree, if you wanna bring your old tax returns, you can get them shredded for free.
Yes, there you go. We have, we will have a shredding, certified shredding truck, one that is certified to keep them private.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Stand adjourned. Thank you all.